Hey Matt, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Yeah, five thirty guys, let's stand the pledge.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you sir. Roll class.
Charles Wolsey.
Here.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Ian Craig Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda commissioners?
I haven't.
Any guys?
Yes, yes, I'd like to add on transit. And we are going to the wash spot, the wash spot that we approved at our last. June.
So where would you like that?
Cold storage, could we put it at?
Discussion items?
That'd work.
Okay transit and what else, I'm sorry.
It was just transit slash the wash spot and new cold storage each.
Okay, anything else? A public comment, any public comment on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Appointments, I don't believe we have any, correct Tim? Unless something's changed, discussion items. A notice of intent to exercise right of first refusal.
So you've got a handout that was provided by the treasurer. That lists a number of properties that you have as a municipality, a first right of refusal. The way this process works and that steal the treasurer's thunder is that the municipalities have their first right of refusal on these properties. After the municipalities have passed some, then the land bank actually has an opportunity to pick them up as well. After that, I'm not sure what happens, it just kind of falls off, you know, for me. But you have, you know, a certain period of time as a county, if there are any of these pieces that you'd like to pick up, you could. I will just be so bold as to recommend that you not do any at this point, we, I think we've got plenty of land already.
Is this, there's only a page and then one on the next page, is this less than last year?
It's seven more than last year.
What is? Any, any questions or concerns? I mean, obviously, we don't have free money to spend on this, so. Anything commissioners?
I did, I saw the list, but I, it's just property numbers, I don't know where we're at, so.
I didn't know where we are.
When, when's the deadline for this?
July first.
Oh, okay.
But the sooner the better.
I'll come into your office, take a look at what properties are there.
I will too.
Okay.
Or you can look at the county website, the GIS mapping system and put in the parcel.
If you don't want me to come in, I'll look at this.
You're welcome to stop by.
I'll look at the.
It's good, it's good information to know that it is offered on the public website.
For anyone who would like to see, you can go to GIS or the county website, put in the parcel number and look at them now.
Okay.
Item B procurement card limits.
This, last week, we had a situation that's becoming pretty common over at Veterans, they needed to register for a conference that the Veterans Affairs Team ends each year. In a conference, of course, it's multiple days, which means hotel stays. The procurement card limits that we set when we passed the policy a year or two ago was at a thousand dollars unless a department came in and requested more. We've had several departments come in since then who requested a higher limit because the thousand just wasn't quite enough to get them through things like registering for conferences. And what happened with Veterans this time? They had some charges already on their card, there weren't many, but as you can imagine, that started shrinking that thousand, they had two employees who would need to go to this conference. And they were scrambling to put together enough departments with procurement cards that had space on them to register for this conference. In their case, we were able to work it, work it out, the hotel actually held with a deposit, they didn't require a hundred percent upfront. But it still left them a little bit short and just would like to have discussion about your thoughts about raising the minimum on these procurement cards, raise it up to one thousand, maybe two thousand or twenty-five hundred. We had Karen, I think there were six, we had identified that have already come through and have had to have increases on their cards. And I don't recall exactly how many total that we have out there, but not much more than those six. So that's why this is here, is just to gauge your thoughts on the possibility of raising those limits a little bit, so that we don't have these recurring problems.
There's six, there's six procurement cards total, is that what you just?
We have six that have asked for increases from that initial one thousand dollars that you have granted and increased value.
How many total are there?
I didn't bring the list with me, I just printed it today.
Just printed it for me.
I would say maybe ten or eleven departments that have credit cards.
Has there been any issues with them?
Other than that, the timing of paying the limit is.
Correct, any other issues?
No, no.
Commissioner Wolsey?
Quite well.
So ultimately though, the cards used, you see everyone and you're the one that approves it or?
So all of the credit card statements come to me, I then disburse them to the departments that have charges, asking them to review the statement and code their invoices, return them to me. And then I process the payment and turn in a document to claims for you all to review for the claims documents and post a journal entry for the expenses to put to the books.
But ultimately, you look at it, if something doesn't seem right, you're the one that?
Is calling the department.
It's in claims for us to review too.
Correct, after I process the payment, I give it to Tracy to put in claims for you to review.
Right.
But then the department should also be listing it as a prepaid item for you to review in the regular claims process.
Comments, thoughts commissioners, Commissioner Wolsey?
I mean, seems like it's a real inconvenience at, at moments here and I like the process. I definitely like that it goes through Karen first, then of course it even gets down to us when we, the two commissioners we have at that time that are going through them, so I have no problem increasing it.
Commissioner Scott?
This seems to be an exception to the rule, instead of the rule being an exception. I wouldn't mind having the treasurer or and/or the administrator be able to have a little higher limit to allow it to happen. I'm afraid that by raising the limit, will spending go up? And because the limit is higher and they're already going to different departments to get other credit. We're, we're going to other departments trying to loop credit cards together.
In, in this case, that's exactly what was happening and I appreciate that this might have been avoided had the registration occurred maybe two or three weeks earlier instead of the last day. But that's where we were.
That's kind of where I was gonna go with that, I mean, you register for things typically, I mean, you have a pretty, pretty substantial notice. And they could have easily came to us, I understand they can have been convenience, but they could have easy come for this approval well before the actual deadline. But, your thoughts?
We got eleven of them out there, we raise them and they max them. That's a pretty good chunk of change.
Maybe just raise Tim's and that way Tim could approve the purchase.
We raised his for one deal.
Right, for temporary, and temporarily.
Not forever, but if you raise them all and they max them, somewhere along the line, we gotta pay for it.
Good point.
That's a good point. In a situation like this, maybe we could have raised it for that one, for that one, one incident to cover that cost. And just approve it for one incident, not carte blanche across the board, I don't like the carte blanche across the board, because it could get out of control.
Karen, did you have something?
Yeah, may I suggest that you not just keep temporarily changing credit limits for departments, because every time you do, I have to go in and request the increase, wait for the approval to come, notified at department. And then when the expenditure's done, I have to go back in and decrease it through the system.
All right.
I would rather you not do those on temporary basis, we're gonna set a limit, set a limit for that department and.
That doesn't make sense, because some things are gonna be high, very few, I mean, that's the whole purpose of them coming to us.
Right.
For the individual.
Under Tim's authority versus us raising all these other departments randomly and everybody having a different credit limit. Initially, we set it so that everyone would be the same and there was consistency across the board.
Correct.
Now we've got all different, love all different levels of credit lines for different departments.
We, we don't though, I mean, they're back to all two, am I guessing, I miss, hang on please. Am I misunderstanding, right now, everybody is at, and if there's somebody that's gonna be over the thousand, they have to come to us for the approval, but everybody's at a thousand right now, correct?
So what's happened, or since we've adopted the policy, six departments have come in and asked for higher.
Correct, they did.
So those six are higher than the thousand, the rest of them are still at the thousand.
So where are those six at? I was under the understanding, I thought we did like a single purchase for those six.
No, you did that with the latest one when emergency management was in here and they needed that one-time purchase, so we did increase.
Correct.
One time, the other ones, for instance, friend of the court was in here, had an increase.
We increased them.
To deal with child placement issues that they were having, I don't remember who else.
Sheriff's Department, the jail, maintenance.
Where are they at? They're at?
Two thousand or twenty-five hundred, I, I could verify the list for you tomorrow Jenny, and where everybody's at, who all has cards and what limit they're at.
Yeah, that does have to be confusing, I, I don't disagree with that.
Well, and that, in that case, I'd like to be able to take a look at what has been the history of spending on a monthly basis then. By raising it, are we maxing, are we getting closer and closer to the max every month?
Yeah.
If, if it went up to two thousand and now average spending is eighteen hundred a month. If I go to three thousand, is it gonna be twenty-eight hundred dollars a month?
Paul, did you have something?
I just wanna say, as one of the credit card holders that does it, you're, you're making charges that are part of the budget. It's not just twenty-five dollars extra, if I'm making a charge, I'm looking at the line item that's gonna be assigned and it's money, even though it's filtering through the credit. I know which line it's coming out of in my budget. So the twenty-five hundred, you shouldn't be maxing it out all that very often, because I know where my budget is. So if I got a hotel in training, I know that I've only got X number of dollars. You're not gonna get overages outside of my budget on the credit card unless I do something wrong or make a mistake.
Correct, we just got, wanna make sure that with that convenience doesn't come overspending, we, doesn't get out of control, understand it's gotta come from the budget, but just making sure that it's not going beyond the budget line.
We record it on each one that comes through as a free, yes. The limit itself to me doesn't cause a concern, it's the department that has the responsibility to make sure that money's in the line item, that that charge is coming out of. So very rarely do we get close to the max, it's only when we have like a hotel, two or three and four of these, if they're all going to the same conference. Most of the time, it's like for a piece of equipment, it's two hundred dollars.
But we have had some, some over budget, we were over budget on a few things fairly recently.
Well, we're getting to the point where halfway through budget, there's a few things that come over budget, whether it's on the credit card or not, I don't know. Credit card, like Karen said, they need to be reported on, pre-pays on everybody's cover sheet and I have found a few that have not been, so I've already addressed that and working on that.
So what would you like, Commissioner Scott, before you make a decision?
Well, the other, the other thing that bothered me with credit cards at the, at the onset of it, was that it was in the ease, it was very, it made it easier to buy outside the county. It made it real easy, because Amazon, oh my gosh, I mean, you guys have done claims, you see the Amazon expenses. They're all over the place, you know? I, I've said it, I've said it right from the first day I was commissioner, we need to shop local, as local as we can. I know it takes time, I know that, but those local vendors are taxpayers.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that.
And if we make it easy to go outside the, of local spending, what happens? They'll go the easy route.
Tim, what's your suggestion?
Well, I like Commissioner Scott's idea of at least bringing in the list of cards that we have out there, what the limits are, and then maybe some history on some of those cards. You know, this is easy for me to say, it'll be Karen that's gotta produce all this, right, but I, I think that's worth you seeing before you make a decision. So you got an idea of where things lie, I have to tell you, I don't have a horse in the race, so wherever you go with this is fine, but we just, but after this last incident, that I would bring this to you and we talk about it, then if you were interested, then we go ahead and make the move, but I, I think that's good to have that data before you, you know, defend advance or one way or another.
Right, I'd like to see where everybody's credit, your credit limit is, I guess I.
Email this to Tim in the morning.
Perfect, so we'll table that till next time. Veterans Affairs Committee Appointments, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, totally sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Well, we're sorry, I'm usually saying sorry. With this particular instance, with, with the veterans, is this, I mean, if we don't do something now.
No, we've, we've taken care of their, their issue, Jeff was able to contact the hotel and they, well, were originally requiring the full stay to be paid, they said, well, we'll just take this deposit from you, which helped get them under their limits, so they, they're all taken care of this time. He ran into the same problem last year and again, with the timing, it didn't help it. I, I don't pretend to understand why it's, you know, a day or two before the registration closed that these things happen, but they do. But he had the same problem, this particular conference they go to each year is in Madison, Wisconsin, so it's, it's not just down the Cadillac or something like that.
I understand.
And it's a week long and that's, that's why it's running into the, to the limit. But again, I think maybe a combination of registering earlier or, you know, if we, I don't know what all the expenses are these putting on this, but I do know it's been a consistent issue for them. You know, another way to do this is, and this is, you know, something you can talk about next time, is you don't have to generally use the credit card, if you register in advance, it can come through regular claims, a check can be written and sent to the venue and you're, you're good that way. But there is sometimes advantage to registering as soon as you can to get the reduced rate on a block of hotel rooms, which sometimes, like with the MAC conference, they tend to run out. So, you know, there's pros and cons to it, but, you know, I like the idea of not rushing into it either and to get that data in front of you, so you can see what those trends look like. And then decide, is this something we wanna go through or is this just a one-time, once or twice a year problem, and maybe that's, that's okay.
So the bottom line is that earlier you register, at least difficult it is for us.
Usually that's true.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's all, thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Mayhew, did you have anything else? Okay, Veterans Affairs Committee Appointments, we have Jay Weiss and Mark DeBoer.
So there are two openings and two applicants, there was a resignation recently off from the Veterans Board, which is why you see two applicants this time around, as you go through the materials, you'll see that these candidates have been vetted by the Veterans Affairs Board and by our staff. So they're matching all the criteria they need to meet for their board. So if you were willing, these will be on for next week for appointment.
Are there two openings on this?
Yes.
Okay, no problem with that.
Any other comments, questions?
No, I don't see a problem here.
I don't see any problem.
Jeff's on the phone, is he? There's a bunch of minutes in here.
Yeah.
They're handwritten minutes, I hadn't seen that in a long time, seventeen pages. I read them too. No, we'll have that on for next week, August millage questions. We have six of them on there, Veterans Transit Commission on Aging, Emergency Medical Services Equipment, Headley Override and Jail Operating.
Okay, some of these were just born on a conversation from past meetings, you haven't decided, for instance, on jail or the backup on the Headley, to move forward with these. The Veterans' current millage is, is to expire this year, so you've got the numbers that they've requested. Transit, we had a meeting today with the Transit Committee and I believe we settled on point seven-five.
That's correct.
The recommendation out of the committee, so that's the number that's already inserted. Commission on Aging, there's, needs to be renewed, they've asked to be at that point seven-five, which is where they were. The EMS millage is a new one, they're asking for equipment millage for five years, half a mil. And there you see the correctional facility proposal that was still in its discussion phases, so there are no numbers plugged in for you, but I'll address that again in a second. And that backup Headley restoration proposal, this would be a county only for ten years and the increase take us back up to seven point two from the six point oh nine, and this is one that you would consider only if the May seventh proposal doesn't change. Now, clarification on the calendar for these. The original thought was that you had to adopt this language next Thursday to meet the April thirtieth deadline, well, it turns out that April thirtieth deadline is only the deadline to put the clerk on notice that you intend to put something on the ballot. So there's still another round of meetings before you would have to commit to language, so that actually makes it easier, we can go ahead and submit the intent and not any language yet. If May seventh is, is approved, we don't follow up, there's no language then to send your thing off the ballot, so it, it kinda makes it a little bit cleaner. Last page on the material that you have, I put together a calculator, calculator, a spreadsheet for you, so that you get an idea from the level of point zero five mils, oh, left to one mil, how much is generated? So if you were interested in going through with the jail millage, for instance, and you wanted to do some fraction of the mil, you can just do the arithmetic and see just how much, you know, that will generate based on the most recent taxable value number that was provided a meeting or two ago, equalization. So that's where we are, each of these has been reviewed by council already, so they're, they're ready to go otherwise. So that just comes down now to decisions from you as to which, if any or all, that you wanna put on the ballot.
Commissioner Mayhew did bring the budget for Commission on Aging that was brought up. How, how their budget was and what their balance.
Fund balance on it, because I found a nine ninety on mine, but it might be a year old.
So he, he did bring that, if anybody would like to see that, so first I've seen the emergency medical service equipment, I guess, did I miss that somewhere, have we talked about?
Yeah, we've been talking about it for a while.
For a while, yeah.
At the time.
The EMS board, has it been brought to us?
Yeah, yeah, when we started talking strategy, it was brought, brought in here for August, this was a while ago, we got this and it's on there, the EMS equipment.
I remember seeing that, but I guess, has it been like verbiage in, in what equipment or has anything been, I guess I don't remember, I, I know they were, they were financially hurting, I guess, is what equipment are they thinking? Just upgrade?
Yeah, there's a lot of equipment needing to be upgraded, we have some, some of the current vans are, you know, older with high mileage and they're, they're all, we're also trying to, you know, find revenue through grants. But, you know, the financial situation that we're in, it's not that favorable and they just really felt that'd be a smart move to try to, try to get a millage for equipment only, I don't know, Paul, would you like to add?
So this is an addition to their current one, right?
Correct.
Do you have anything to add to that, Paul? Are, you're on the board too?
Correct. I agree with what he talks about with that, obviously, the thought is with the current sta- status of, you know, mass that the equipment would help offset, just tonight, we were talking about replacing the lift cots. We have several of them that are past their life cycles and need to be replaced, we're talking seventy thousand dollar loans for a couple of them. So that millage would help stabilize EMS moving forward and it would be able for us to make sure EMS has the equipment to do their job. So that was the idea that I did.
Questions guys?
Well, I, I don't see any problem, Veterans Transit, Veterans Commission on Aging and EMS, they have come to us, they've asked of Transit, that's, that, we're gonna have to put that on this year because we have to renew something here. I just, the, the override is, is an end case kinda thing. The thing with the August ballot is, the ballots are gonna be huge everywhere, every, every position and every township is up for reelection. State representative is up, state senator is up, US Senate is up this year. You're, and then proposals, what sheriff, you got three in Mills Township to fire in a gypsy moth?
Yeah. And Rose. Library. Added to that.
Library all across the county.
It's gonna be a lot.
There's gonna be a lot, the voters are gonna have, and then, well, all the commissioners too, and all the other counties, they've got five other counties elected officials. So there's just gonna be, it's gonna take some time to sit in a ballot booth this, this time, it's not gonna be like February where you just went in and saw three things and, and hit them, you know? There's gonna be a lot and I, and I know that other townships have some, we have Rose on, on our list.
Can I add to this?
Yeah, I guess, she says.
Were you done, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Go ahead, now you, since he's finished, go ahead.
So when we first started strategizing for millages, I mean, we knew right away, we were looking at voter exhaustion, that's one of the parts of the strategy, was trying to, moving forward to have different times of these millages, so we don't come into a situation like this in the future. I mean, another big thing we gotta talk about, you know, still tonight, is, you know, the direction that we're thinking to head for the possibility of the jail millage.
Right, that's, that's on there, so I guess, like, which ones were we thinking for May, which ones are we thinking for August?
Well, May is done.
May's in the books.
So what's on exactly for May?
Yeah.
We have the Headley, shall Headley override?
That's what I.
Animal.
I wanna verbalize this, I know.
The animal care millage.
Yep, and that's it, right?
There's a school millage.
School millage.
I'm seeing for us.
For us, yeah, just those two.
Yes, that's what I thought, so Headley was there, so all of these other ones, we're looking at August, correct? The one through four, well, we will see, if we move forward with them, we'll see them for sure on August. The Veterans of Transit Commission on Aging and Emergency Medical Services Equipment.
Yes.
So take the Headley off there, that's a go-ahead for, for May. I'm just trying to figure out a timeframe on there.
Why it's there for August is in case of May failing, that's the only reason it's on that list.
Can I clarify that?
Go ahead.
We're talking about down for August, that means it'll just be the county, and we won't try to, try to do with the ISD or, or the townships, this time we're trying to help the townships too, because some of them have lost a third of their financial budget because of the Headley, and we'd like to bring them back up to their one mil, and if that fails, then that's why this is on there, just to bring us back to where we were at seven point two, because then we're at six point zero, something or other.
One more comment on that.
Go ahead.
And the other big change on that is it's not indefinite, it's ten years.
And what, which one, what are you talking about?
So if that, we would have to try for the August Headley, it's only for ten years.
Go ahead Commissioner, Simmons, did you have something?
Well, the indefinite thing, I mean, it's been seven point two mil since, before I was one probably, no, after I was one, it's been seventy years since then. I'm pretty old, I, I forget how old I am.
Sixty-five.
In sixty-five, we were sort of seven point two.
So seven point two, so I mean, and that's when it was done indefinite, so I think, I don't think we can increase it anymore than seven point two mils, can we? No, no, we can't.
No, that's not, I'm getting, I'm just saying in ten years, that we have to go back to the voters again to make a decision.
Well, we may have to go back to the voters sooner than that, depends what the Headley does to us within those ten years.
That's fair, I, I, I guess, are you looking for an open discussion, are you looking for the amounts, are you looking for a yea or a nay to, to give? A clerk?
Yeah.
What direction are you?
The, the minimum to do at this point, if any of these that you wanna see on the ballot, is a minimum, next Thursday, you'll need to pass one of those resolutions that puts the clerk on notice that you intend to put these on the ballot. And then there's one more round before you have to settle on what the language says. Some of these, you've vetted quite a bit already, I'll just use the, let's use the Transit Millage for instance. There's been a lot of discussion already about point seven-five, if you're satisfied with this language, as it is now, next Thursday, you can adopt a resolution that sends this language to the clerk and says, please put this on the ballot, so you don't have to go through two steps, but you can.
That's the same with any of this, is that correct?
It's true with any of these, so if you're satisfied with all these and you want them all to go, we can set you up to do that next week.
How about if we take these one by one right now, the veterans, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's, Jeff takes care of all of that. I think that's a no-brainer, if that's the amount that he says it's needed. Pardon me?
I agree.
I think we're all definitely support the veterans in this county. You guys agree with the veterans? Yes? What, what's?
Of course I do.
But I'm waiting for your response.
Of course I do.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah.
Okay, so next we have Transit. At the point seven-five, I, I think you guys have evaluated this, you guys have a board, you've discussed this, this is what you guys have come up with. Again, we verbalized at the last meeting that if we look at a fund balance next year and, and the state has provided more funding than, that you guys were not anticipating, the fund, and we cannot take as much out if not needed. But if the point seven-five is what you guys feel you need at this point in time, I bet you guys it's a good decision to take to voters.
And, and it's.
Yes.
And you did, we do have the right not to collect everything, and this board has, not me on it, but this board has done that before, has not collected millage.
Correct.
Because the service wasn't provided for the whole time, so they took part of that millage back.
What?
So it's not as though we have to. So it's not as though we have to collect the whole millage, we could collect just part of that.
What we requested, um, which I don't think you were, is ha- is each one of these come in, the department heads come in with their fund balance.
Yep.
Um, to give an explanation of where they're at and why we're continuing to collect that or what is needed.
Yes.
So, um, I'm okay with the Transit as well. Right, Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Wiltsey?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Okay.
Commission on Aging?
Yes.
Agreed, the fund balance, what's your fund balance?
They said around two hundred, but they'll be three months without, and for the next year, they take that to get going again. So that, it, it shows that it's a fund balance, but it's not. I talked to the lady today. That's what she told me.
Again, I'm a huge advocate of this, I utilize these services a lot, they do a lot for our residents.
Tickle they had one. They're better shaped than we are.
Oh, a fund balance?
Yeah, to fall back on.
Now, and this hasn't changed, this is what they've been collecting, correct?
Well, they've, they've been uh, rolled back, just like everyone else, and you can see this is a ten year proposal. And I believe their prior millage was also ten years, started at point seven five, but then was rolled back, just like ours has been. This will actually reset them at the point seven five, and then that whole process starts over.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So when their original uh, millage was passed at point seven five, they're subject to the Headley rollback, just like our operating funds.
Okay.
And so um, I don't know exactly what they are right now, but it's something less than point seven five. Oh, there it is, it's point seven four eight six.
That's what I.
This is a point zero zero one four increase, uh, but resets them at the, at that point seven five again. And then the rollbacks will start and go on for ten years.
Questions, did you?
I have no problem with commissioning.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Good.
Next, we have the Emergency Medical Services Equipment. Thoughts, comments? Commissioner Wiltsey?
Um, if I could do this again, I would have asked Justin, you know, our new director, come in and talk to you guys on this. Um, I definitely feel it's something that we need. Again, you know, there's been a lot of changes out there in this past year, again, financially not in a very favorable position, but we all know the importance. Of the service that they, they bring to the county. Uh, I really think it would be vital to be able to get this passed and really help to be able to. Increase some of the uh, the older equipment that we have and get back to where we need to be.
Commissioner Scott?
I understand why they're asking for it. I, I'll go ahead.
What is?
I don't have a problem putting it on the ballot.
I don't know. Commissioner Simmons, go ahead. Commissioner Simmons, let's go forward, guys. I'm fine. You okay with that? They're gonna have to sell it to the voters. Uh, Commissioner Mayhew?
What's their fund balance?
Uh, at the EMS?
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, we have a month and a half, we don't even have, we don't even have two months in a fucking.
Karen, did you have something?
I do, I just noticed that on some of these uh, proposals, it's only mentioning two of the DDAs when we have four.
So we have agreements, but two of those DDAs not to collect them, especially on which is.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I'm sorry.
So like Paul said, we have a, right around about a month and a half, so our fund balance is good.
Have you just collected any grants in the past year?
Uh, yes, for uh, new ambulance, right?
Yeah, there's several grants.
New ambulance and also for the um, in-board.
Forget what they call them, chest, the automatic chest compression.
Oh, yeah.
Those things.
Yeah, Bob, Bob Dak uh, does a lot with EMS and fire, so I know we've gotten a couple in this past year, since I've been on board.
Funding from the state, does EMS get any?
Direct funding from the state outside of grants, no. You get the Medicaid and Medicare, which you're familiar with. As far as the payout and what they're, I know they were part of a study, they told us through trying to get some of those numbers changed. Because the reimbursement rates are so low. Uh, but direct funding from the state for EMS services, I'm not aware of. Talk at this point, that we receive anything like that.
I'm not aware of either.
Karen, do you know?
I, I would have to agree with them.
Okay.
From when EMS used to be part of the county before it becoming a city, I don't recall them ever receiving state funding, other than grants.
It's weird that the Transit does, which is great, but EMS doesn't. So you guys have no problem with that being put on? Okay, so that'll be on the August ballot.
Correct.
Okay, Headley override. We'll see that in May?
Well, so the sequencing is this, um, you meet uh, next week. Which uh, is the last meeting before the notice of intent to the clerk, um, has to be issued, which is April thirtieth. Then you'll have a committee hall meeting, I think that meeting's May fourth, if I'm not mistaken on my dates. Uh, and then the following Tuesday is the election. Uh, then you have one more meeting, uh, it'll be May eleventh then, right, if my math's right. Where you could then decide whether to submit language to the clerk to actually be put on the ballot. So what next week would do is reserve a spot, if you decide that you wanna do it. But wait for that election to occur before you make the final decision, whether you proceed. So I would suggest doing that, that if, if you really want the uh, backup plan. Is that we do a resolution of intent next week, and then wait for the result of the election, and then you have one more regular meeting. To decide if you wanna put this language forward. It's not needed if it passes, obviously, so it's um. It would just save you the effort of having to pass yet another resolution to rescind the resolution, putting this forward. You know, if you do that ahead of time.
See, I, I will struggle, if it goes down in May, I will struggle putting it on again in August, putting another one of these. Which will, will cross that bridge when we get there, but putting another one of these millages um. In jeopardy, I, I, I definitely will struggle, juggle with that, so I guess we'll see what May, what May brings. Go ahead.
But this one that he's talking about is different than the one that's on there now.
It's got some, it's a little shorter, but.
Go ahead.
That's all I have to say, it's not, it's not, it's not the same. It'll be different.
So one, if it passes in May, you still wanna put this on?
No, 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 if it passes in May, we won't.
Okay.
What I'm saying is if it doesn't pass in May, this new one isn't gonna be the same as the one for May.
Which makes sense.
That's all I'm saying, well, I mean, I thought, it sounded like you were saying it was the same thing.
Well, I, no matter what, i- i- if, if it goes down in May, I'm gonna really struggle. Even putting anything remotely like this back on in August to me, cause to me, that's the, the voters have, have spoken. They, would, hopefully it doesn't, hopefully it passes and we don't have to have this conversation again. But putting that millage back on again in August could put one of these other ones, whether it's Veterans Transit Commission on Aging.
I agree.
In jeopardy.
I agree.
That's not something that at this point in time, uh, I believe I would be willing to do.
And just to muddy the waters a little bit more for you. Yep, um. Commissioner, um, David, just to follow up on your thoughts. I, I get it, you know, maybe putting this on there maybe detracts from one of the others. The way this works and, and we'll maybe call Randy in here to confirm, but in my conversation with Randy is uh, that when these pass. That you can't collect on them until the following calendar year, so no matter what, it's a twenty twenty-five July. When this ends up being collected and still impacts our twenty-five budget that way. So what I'm getting at is if you wanted to wait, and please don't make this decision tonight, I mean, you got time to think about it. But if you wanted to wait until November on something like this, that could happen, but just understand, we're gonna adopt a budget.
Understood.
Ahead of that, that um, will, you know, depend, you know, maybe on, on something like this. So if we were counting on that being passed, you might be amending a budget uh, in, you know, January. That makes some dramatic reductions. Uh, but I mean, that's, that's something to just think about. Again, you don't have to make a decision right now, but strategically, where these are placed. That might be another option to think about.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I, I agree with you, um. The thing is, the voter, we already know the voter has misconceptions about a lot of things, and they, and perceptions. When they look at this stuff, they think the counties, all these are the county. Okay, they think, they think, they, we already know, people get mixed up between nine one one and EMS constantly.
Yes, they do.
And they all think that the county owns them all.
We don't.
I get it, but they think it is. So when they go in that ballot booth. You know, they're looking at all these, oh, geez, the county's trying to get me for this, 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 you know? And if we keep piling more on to it, I think we're, we're jeopardizing. Not only our stuff, but I think we jeopardize some of the township stuff too. We could, we gotta understand that we're part, we're partners with them too in this, in this thing. I know they're not coming to our meeting, talking to us about it, but. We gotta stay cons- thinking about that.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Yeah, I agree with both of you guys big time. Um, I mean, obviously coming right out of the gates here, it's extremely frustrating. The way that wordage is for the Headley, you know, that right out, right out of the gates has not helped us at all. Um, you know, and we are trying to educate, you know, the public as best as we can. Um, you know, the tours of the townships and everything that we're trying to do, and I think these next three weeks, we're gonna see a lot of exposure on this. But it hasn't helped, and then, you know, the animal shelter, there's all sorts of questions on that, there's a lot of negativity on that, so. We're fighting that, plus with looking at all of these millages, you know, ahead of us. And then we're even in the talks of, of thinking about, you know, a jail millage, and I agree with you said, I mean, we can't put a jail millage on for August. I mean, where our, you know, our constituents are, are fighting hard enough as it is with inflation and, and all of these costs. That, that they had, that they had, they didn't have years ago, and now we're putting this, you know, all on them. But the bottom line is, and you guys, whoever comes meetings and will hear me say is. Our people need to know our, our financial situation, we need to be very clear with that. You know, we have no money, we are broke, and if we do not get the Headley to pass and we can generate more money. We're gonna have to make major cuts to this, to the county service.
I, I didn't, I didn't say anything about the jail, I was talking about the Headley going back on in August.
No, I understand, I'm just talking the jail because, I mean, it's on our list and.
Correct, that's next.
To discuss, but, and, and I said, I agree with you, what you're saying.
Oh, I thought you, okay, go ahead, Commissioner uh, Simmons?
They talk about the county, 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 putting these villages on. Uh, when they, when they look, when they look at the proposals on the ballot, look at the very top, it'll say counties. School ISDs, it'll say county, it'll say EMS, it'll tell you who's putting that millage on. If we're putting the millage on, it'll say county. We're not putting only a couple of these villages on.
I'm just saying.
Right.
I'm just saying, it's not always what's written up there is what they, they don't read, people don't read.
Okay, hold on.
They don't read.
Listen to me, read the top of the ballot, so nobody's putting it on the ballot, alright?
I, I would like to table the Headley, the number five, Headley override, I just, I, I'm not comfortable making a decision about that right now. But that's, that's again, that's my opinion, it's already a go ahead at this point in time for, for May. I'm not comfortable revisiting that.
November's wide open. We, we've left November wide open all this time.
Right, we got plenty of time to talk about that. Again, I'd like to table it for right now, I would like to talk about the jail operating, are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
Millage? Know what?
Put the jail millage on?
Uh, that's what we're talking about now, what are your thoughts about putting on, I, I guess. I guess Sheriff and, you wanted to, you guys were gonna do some investigating and get back to us, did you have anything? On this millage, have you seen the verbiage here? Where is it? There's no numbers in there yet, I looked at it last night.
We're looking at that and we, we think the verbiage is fine, but we feel that. We should ask for, if anything at all, one to one and a half, and no more than that. That's our feeling, John.
Thoughts, Commissioner Simmons? So we're looking at this right now of, of, if we're gonna put it on, put it on either August or November.
My comment is this, even if we pass the Headley, we're still gonna be behind the eight ball. If we don't go for a full millage, millage on that, and the prices keep going up every year, we're gonna pay the price, price later. And then we're gonna be right back where we are today. Just, just seeing, seeing what history's been. So, you know, since I was commissioner last time, it's increased over a million dollars, or a million dollars, let's say.
He put, yeah, he put, he put a table on here, that was pretty informative of the cost and the revenue and the expenditures for the jail. Thoughts, Commissioner Mayhew?
We're, we're gonna put a millage on it so we can pick up dogs, so we got a place to put them.
We're talking about correction, we're talking about the jail?
I am.
Okay.
I am, but we, we, we have to have a place to put the dogs, so we're not gonna pick them up. That's what we pulled, correct? If the dog pound closes up, the dog ward can't pick up, pick dogs. If we don't, we close the jail. Where are we gonna put the prisoners? We're not gonna pick them up.
So right now, we're talking about a millage.
And, and what I'm saying is, we're all on board to have a spot to put the dogs.
Okay, yep.
But not for the people.
Well, we gotta be able to afford it, so we're trying to figure out how we can afford it.
I, I, I know this, and that's why we're, this is what we're trying to do.
Correct. So your thoughts about having, putting, letting the people decide as far as putting a millage on?
Correct. I mean. The people are, are the ones that are gonna pay. The working people pay. Let them have the say.
Do you have a, do you have an idea for an amount?
I do not. They, they said talking a million and a half, but. Like you said, we, we have, we have got more money from this last five percent increase. And I understand, it's not, when you spread it, it's gonna be thin. But nobody's talking that, but we are gonna get more, somewhere around three hundred thousand.
But we also have the five hundred thousand dollars of upper bonds that we have to, are gonna lose.
Absolutely, I mean, it, it's gonna be tough, but. My theory is, if, we, we care enough that we're gonna pick the dog up, put it in, in the, in the jail. You gotta do something with the people. But we can't pick them up.
Commissioner Simmons?
That's right on a true statement, we can't pick them up. And just like other people have outsourced their prisoners to us, we can outsour, outsour our prisoners to someplace else, and we will save. A lot of money, I would say we save, and I'm, I'm speculating a million dollars in money.
Well, those numbers are numbers we would need in front of us.
I understand, but I put it out there ten, ten, twelve years ago, whatever it was, all ago it was. And um, I said, then what was gonna happen, and here it is, it's happening.
Commissioner Scott?
Um, well, as far as the, the. The animal services, first of all, it doesn't go to any certain entity yet. We have to assign that to that entity. Now, that's the Ray family. Uh, the Ray family uh, the service center there has, has said that if they didn't get a millage, they would continue. But it would be tough. We already have a contract with them.
They would continue until they couldn't?
Yeah, they would continue until they couldn't. There are other counties that will take our dogs. There is not. Yeah, we'll pay, yeah, we'll pay. Uh, Aranac takes them, uh, uh, Ross County can take them. It will pay.
But, Mr. Wiltsey said we're broke, we got no money, what we're gonna pay them with?
Well, we have some, we have, we have, we have money right now in the budget that we're paying. Uh, the race, the Ray people right now, we got money, we're doing that too. Now, if we gotta cut back on the amount of dogs we pick up, that may happen. That may happen. Uh, right now, I think we're fifty dogs a year or something, I can't remember what the contract was. At fifty dogs, plus then there's the per dog charge after that, and we base that on, on historical facts. Uh, uh, you know, there was, there was a time when we didn't have any animal control at all, so. You know, and. That may happen down the road too.
It may.
It, it was an analogy, and it was, it wasn't, it was.
But I think it, I don't think you're, I don't think it's fair to compare the dogs to, it's not apples for apples. They're not comparing the same thing.
What do you mean by that?
Uh, we're not, we're not, we're not putting priority on picking up animals and not picking up people. Or housing animals and housing people. I just, it, it's, it's, it's just totally different.
It was an analogy, and, and I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Mayhew to an extent, I, I'd agree, I think, I think the people need to decide. Um, I, I think whether or not the jail uh, continues, uh, we've got our jail bond uh, amounts on here. We've got our revenues and expenditures from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four for the public to see. Um, if they're saying one mil and that will cover us. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, it won't cover us.
Guys, I wasn't done, and our department. Guys, I wasn't done. And our department heads are, are sitting here saying who, who we trust. They run the department. They handle their budget. They're saying one mil is what they need. That's what they're saying they need. We trusted these other ones to come to us with the point seven fives. And the point five for the medical equipment, I, that's what they're saying they need. That's what they say they need. And now we have to talk about, and I don't think you need a decision tonight. Um, when, when putting this on, whether it be August or November.
Decision time would start next week on Thursday. If you wanna put it on in August, we have to notify the clerk. We don't have to have the language ready yet, but we have to notify the clerk.
I think it should be on in August. The Headley, I say no, the jail, jail operating, jail operating. Go ahead, Commissioner Scott, you had something?
I, 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 well, first of all, first of all, I think if, if we're gonna do a village, we need, we need to cover the cost of, of operating.
I agree.
And, and, uh, anything other than that is a Band-Aid. And, and we're, we're telling ourselves that we're gonna go back and say, well, we asked for one. Two, three years later, we're gonna go back and say, I gotta have another half. And, and we're just gonna keep Band-Aiding the thing over and over and over again. We know the operating costs are going up. Uh, we're, we're trying, we're trying different things. We, we've, we've asked the sheriff to start charging for inmates. We're not seeing the revenue coming in yet. If I have, if I had something I could track. But right now, we're talking hundreds of dollars coming in and not thousands of dollars. You know, I, 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 I just don't, I don't like a Band-Aid on it. You missed it.
Okay, let's just, uh, Wiltie?
So I think the stakeholders of the sheriff and the, and the jail, you know, they're saying one or one point five, and that's just gonna offset costs. I mean, I would imagine they know what these costs are. That isn't gonna pay to, pay to, you know, keep the jail going where we're not, it's not costing the county every year. It's just gonna offset the cost. Commissioner Scott made a point. You know, just to put a Band-Aid on things, you know, we, you know, we're at a point right now financially where uh, to put a Band-Aid on anything is, in my eyes, not a smart, smart move. Um, you know, we made it very clear that if the Headley passes, but we have never committed to say that that's gonna go to help offset jail costs. That's gonna help offset, you know, we actually be able to keep the level of somewhat level of where our county government is going, but we're still gonna have to make cuts in September because ultimately we need to get rid of that negative cash flow. We need a fund balance. But agreeing with what the sheriff, the undersheriff said, if we do do this village at one or one, I would say, you know, one point five, it's, it's just an offset. I mean, if you, two point five would be just, I mean, to ask two point five with everything we have going on right now in August, and you're concerned about putting another Headley on to not lose any of these other villages? No way. I mean, our, our voters would, they'd be ready to throw in the towel at us.
Please explain.
Well, I mean, to ultimately to do this right, to get a jail village, we should ask for two point five. That's ultimately what we need. Our costs at the jail just continue to go up. I mean, it costs, it costs a million dollars, almost more now than it did in two thousand nineteen. And all those numbers are just continuing to rise. Less people are going to jail. I mean, we are gonna see some more, an increase in revenue with the lodging. That's gonna take time. That's not a huge number.
Hopefully our tickets go up a little bit. Um, I think right, right now, all you need
Aren't paying for the
Right, yeah, you're right. You're right. You're right. I think right now, um, all you need is, is are we agreeable to move forward with uh, to the clerk's office at putting this on in August? I, 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 you say no? That's no Com- Commissioner Simmons, not putting the jail on in August?
Can I make another option? Commissioner?
Sure.
Well, like Tim said, I mean, all, in September, we have to, we have to have a balanced budget, but we can also amend our budget anytime throughout the year. So another option we could do would put the jail village on in November.
And that puts us back at least four year, four months from August. What, what was that?
What is in a new FY? November is in the new FY.
Which it is, we can amend it, but then we're even further in the hole.
That's right.
So, uh, uh, undersheriff.
The point of conversation, I think you're right now are just committing to putting the language on.
Correct.
I think for the point of discussion, if we went through an exercise, like gets it out in ten spare time, we could put an estimate together between different percentages, the one, the one point five and the revenue. Put that in front of you so we can then have another conversation on form of what, what we would be asking the voters. I think two point, two point five is gonna turn along. But I think in order to actually do that is to get some of the revenues together, put one point five in there and see what the total number will be versus the budget. We also have the reduced budget from the layoffs already we're with.
So the board actually has a table on their, um, iPads that breaks that out. So they wanted to do two, I mean, we've got the math here, we could do it. So one bill is gonna be about one point one million, one and a half would be about one point six, you know, give or take a little bit. Uh, and then we've got all the variables there. If you wanna do one by five, and we could figure that out too. So we've got a rough idea, at least.
So I was kinda thinking, if we put those actually into numbers.
What's, yeah, it is on here.
The housing is the housing. Fees are factor in that revenue?
Um, it's, um, as Commissioner Scott said, at this point, it trended hundreds of dollars, but we don't have enough experience yet of what, what that's gonna bring in to really put a number to it. And if it got to ten thousand, I mean, that would be a great number for that line, but for the overall offset for the jail, it's a drop in the bucket.
I get, I get that. I'm just saying, we could do the exercise of putting revenues plus one point five to see how close we are and for the Band-Aid type of thing and factor in some of those before you actually make a decision of putting a percentage.
I, I think right, I think, I mean, we could go on and on and on with this conversation, and we're gonna continue it. It will be definitely be beyond every conversation between now and in that time. I think again, right now, what you're looking for is us to reserve a spot in August. Answer yes or no for August, Commissioner Simmons?
To reserve a spot?
Yes.
That's not to put it on?
That is to
Is to reserve the spot.
To put it on.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean it will be on.
Still have to make another resolution that passed language, so it's not on until you pass that second resolution.
And doesn't mean you can't change your mind. Remember, we did this. Commissioner Scott, yes, really, really?
I just answered yes to your
I, I know, but we, we, we crossed that bridge already. Yes or no to hold a spot for August for this, and then we're moving forward? Do you want me to come back to you?
No, answer is no.
Okay, Commissioner Mayhew? My answer is yes. Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Wiltie?
I mean, also, I Yes or no? Like, I, no, I wanna, I have something.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sure.
Talk to me, I would like the, I would like the voters to have opinion on this jail. But, you know, up to this point, these last two, three months, there's been all this talk about voter exhaustion, all these villages, all these villages. And now come May, we're gonna throw on another village regarding our jail on, on top of this.
In May?
Well, that's when they're gonna start. They don't, our, our people don't know about this right now. It's never been discussed.
Oh, but it won't be on. I guess I missed it.
It'll be on Start going out. We're gonna go to our townships in May and be like, oh, by the way, now we're gonna put on another village for, for August. I mean, it's gonna be an explosion. An absolute explosion. I know you're, you're waiting for my answer, Jenny. I have the right to talk, okay? I appreciate.
We have a large agenda.
That's fine, that's fine, but that's what we're here to do.
Your answer is yes or no? Do you wanna see this on and off?
I have the right to talk, so I appreciate you.
And I have the right to control this. So your answer is yes or no? And that is my job.
Yes, but I would appreciate if you respect the fact that I can talk when I
Next, we have second quarter budget adjustments. Tim?
Okay, um, got, uh, document in front of you that goes through the various lines that I'm, uh, gonna recommend that we make adjustments to. I'll just hit the highlights because a lot of these literally are nickel and dime, so we don't really need to spend a great deal of time on those. But on the general fund revenue side, uh, on the positive end, there was, uh, uh, revenue received from the state marijuana annual license fee that we did not budget for, and it's coming in at fifty nine thousand eighty-six. Uh, also that local community stabilization, um, line, this is, um, just to echo what I mentioned in the first quarter. I have no idea how they're calculating what revenue we received, but another check showed up for twenty eight thousand seventy-six dollars. You know, where we did den, deny the state, right? So we'll, we'll accept that. I have yet to find a formula to tell me just exactly how much Bogomont County would receive for this. Last year, we had an estimate based on the prior year, based on twenty-two, and it was way under what actually came in. Uh, I'm sorry, our estimate was way over what actually came in. So I, I don't, I don't get it. And I haven't found anybody yet that are gonna explain it to me. So as these, uh, payments are made, you'll see these adjustments. And at least, um, this way, I think it's a little safer for us than to try to second guess exactly what that revenue will be, then count on it and have it not show up. On, uh, the second page, and you've got, uh, the, the next document over, the actual lines that go with each one of these. Uh, but on page two, election reimbursement grant, we understand that all of the expenses that we have for the February election are gonna be reimbursed. And so this is our estimate right now about what that would be. Uh, I suspect it would be more than what this estimate is, but again, it's gonna come down to what's, uh, the state deems as appropriate and what's not. But to offset those additional expenses, I think it's important to at least put a placeholder in right now for what we expect that grant to be. District court ordinance and fines and costs, I'm at this point gonna recommend an adjustment to drop that by about twenty nine thousand based on where we are at the halfway point of the year. Uh, and it's, um, it, it's a pretty low number that's sitting in there right now. Uh, I don't expect there to be a great bit of change uh, moving forward based on what we've seen happen in the past. I'm gonna jump down on page four. There is an additional grant that came in for emergency management at ninety nine hundred, so that's being put in here. And then, uh, airport payroll reimbursement, uh, they're reimbursing a hundred percent, but they've added a part-time position this year and some other expenses, um, that go with that. And so that, that revenue will go up, but that's truly a wash. That's not, not anything that's gonna generate anything extra for the county. So the total increase in revenue for the second quarter will be one hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. On the expense side, uh, hitting the, the high points, uh, dropped down first to the contract services, uh, on the two sixty-two. That's, uh, one of those election reimburse, uh, expenses. In fact, everything that starts with a one, one, two sixty-two is what was used to come up with that grant that we expect is gonna be, uh, reimbursed. Uh, a number that might change between now and next Thursday, uh, on page ten, you start the district court expenses. And in this case, as you know, we've got, um, Danielle from Roscommon County filling in in that court administrator role. She's not taking the wage. Uh, but the travel is, has gone up. So at this point, and I'm not confirmed from the court, but we're kinda running out of time to fill that position for this year. So rather than continue to carry that expense in the budget, this amendment would take it out, but would increase that travel expense that we talked about a meeting or two ago, uh, that's been incurred. So, uh, I will confirm though with the court before, uh, putting together the final resolution. If they think they're gonna have a, a new court administrator, like in the fourth quarter or something like that, I'll, I'll make that adjustment. Uh, on page eleven, that health insurance one, uh, for the, um, prosecuting attorney's office, that we have, uh, uh, one of, two employees, one has been a dependent on the other's, um, health insurance uh, over the years, but they're switching now. Uh, so this employee will be the primary, and the other employee will be the dependent. So it ends up being a wash. It's just a matter of which department, uh, uh, gets, uh, the expense for that. Oh boy, page fourteen, this is what I feared might happen. Uh, we had that grant from Dow for twenty-five thousand dollars for that snowmobile purchase, uh, back, uh, gosh, it was in August or September when that grant came through. And I raised the alarm at that point, uh, with, um, uh, Officer, Officer Better saying, you know, we're right on the line for the fiscal years, so the revenue has come in. Try to make that purchase in fiscal year twenty-three so that it washes out. Well, unfortunately, the auditor circled that and said, no, that purchase actually came in fiscal year twenty-four, so made the adjustment. So we've gotta show that expense in twenty-four now, even though the revenue has already come in in twenty-three. So that's, that's why that expense has gone out. We, it actually is paid for with the grant. But because of the, uh, activity between the two, uh, fiscal years of being right on the line, we get to pay for that in this fiscal year. In the, the jail, the medical contract service, there was also an adjustment, uh, by the auditor. One of our payments, uh, was made in, uh, September, which actually paid for the October bill for jail medical. So that got added. Plus, we made the decision a couple of months ago to, uh, pay that difference in that, um, liability insurance. And so now all those numbers are in, that's why you're seeing that increase. The part-time in the airport, I already mentioned that washes out. Uh, the very last line, the defined contribution plan forfeiture, that's a negative expense. Don't ask me why, how that math works, but that's just how we've been told. This has to be booked. Kinda works like a revenue, but we have to show it as an expense. It's a negative expense, so you see that here, and we'll kinda watch that, see if it grows in the coming year. So overall, for the expenditure total, expenditures would increase at one hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. What I said, do overall, that's about a nine thousand ninety-five dollar, um, increase in expenditure is what it works out to. Uh, but, uh, on, on the good side, and re- remember the angst you went through adopting this budget back in September. Uh, we did adopt it so that there would be a fund balance. So as we sit right now, the projection would be a fund balance of three hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-five. Now, some gray rhinos on the horizon. What's a gray rhino? Well, that's something that we observed that maybe will come back to be a problem for us, uh, later on this year. You know, always monitoring the MERS bill. Uh, we did have to make the adjustment to comply with the contract on two employees who were in the wrong division. They were moved to the correct division. But that did impact the, uh, expense now for that division. I don't know yet if that full expense is now paid, or if this is gonna be an ongoing expense. It just seems like every year we get bit by something like this, uh, with MERS. So we're gonna monitor that. Uh, and obviously keep you posted as, uh, uh, the year goes on. And I already mentioned the district court. Don't know exactly yet what the plan is, uh, with that position. We do have another issue though, uh, that the state legislature is gonna have to deal with, and that concerns, uh, court fines and fees. Uh, there is, you might recall, uh, conversation from a couple of years ago, a thing called the Cunningham, uh, case, where the courts were, uh, the challenge was the courts weren't supposed to be able to, you know, assess certain fines and costs to fund the court. Yeah. That, that's all well and good, but the state has the opportunity through legislation to fix that, but if they don't fix it, then the courts can't impose those fines and costs anymore, and that impacts our budget. It doesn't impact the state budget. It packs our budget significantly. That has not been resolved yet in the, the sunset on our current uh, process. I believe expires, if it's not at the end of April, it's at the end of May, but it's, it's coming quickly. And this, as you know, the legislature, at the pace they move, the likelihood of them getting anything taken care of before then is not very high. In communications that you'll see on the agenda for next week, you'll see one from the state court administrator explaining to all the judges, uh, here's how we're gonna handle this. Uh, you're not gonna be able to impose these fees after a certain, uh, date. There are some maneuvers the courts can do to help lessen the blow, hopefully. Uh, but they're planning right now for the legislature not being able to act in time to save this. So that could potentially be a significant issue for us. I would hope because of their delays that the state would make up for any harm that might be caused to the counties. But you know how that goes, and maybe they will, maybe they won't. Uh, we'll see. So those are a couple of things that we're, we're gonna continue to monitor. Uh, certainly by the time third quarter comes around, a couple of these will be a lot more focused, and we'll be able to make those adjustments accordingly. So just definitely wanted to watch those, that, uh, that court fine and fee issue. Pay attention to the MAC alerts when they go out. Uh, they probably are gonna be the best source right now for keeping us as up, as current as we can be. The rest of these, uh, that you see, uh, are the special funds. A couple of them, uh, for instance, the, the land bank has had a lot of activity. A couple of them, for instance, the Lamb Bank has had a lot of activity, and these are all, you see both the revenues and expenditures here. So all the expenditures are offset with revenues at the Lamb Bank. The other big one is the housing program, we've finally have gotten a handle on their revenue stream and the grants that they've received, and we're struggling dealing with the state's authentication on some of these grants, but that should not impact any of the funding that we see that's in here. But I do want to point out, in almost all these funds, particularly the larger ones, you're seeing some very, very good numbers on interest that's earned on the various funds. I do want to draw your attention to the ARPA fund.
Page.
It's on page four, toward the middle, it's on page forty one, the American Rescue Plan. The interest income alone for this, and I'm projecting now for the remainder of the year, but based on what we've seen for the first six months, about a seventy three thousand five hundred dollar bump in the interest that's been earned. And you'll see that that's throughout, it's not just this fund, but throughout these funds. You see the opioid settlement fund increasing by over two thousand as well. And just, again, compliments to Karen, I mean, these are incredible numbers that we're seeing on investments. And being right on top of that, you can see we're we're definitely seeing some benefit from that. So again, a great job by the treasurer. So that's the nickel version. When you see the resolution, I think it'll be much easier to comprehend each of these than looking at them. But you know, this is the process we have to go through each line and figuring out, you know, where we stand.
It's nice seeing these numbers in this breakdown, good job, Karen. Any questions for Tim, Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Mayo?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
No. I'm seeing outside the, in the general, in the general, I mean, really not talking a whole lot, so many things are awash. You had revenue coming in to cover expenses going out, whether it's airport or grants or or stuff like that. And then, of course, in the specials, in the specials, that's so much of that. So, but I I like seeing that we're we're right here on top of it at the six month point.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Also.
I I see you need a resolution for next week, correct?
Right.
Nothing looks out of the ordinary, it's nice seeing everybody staying on track, so. Okay, next we have the MCAG membership referred from Housing Committee.
Human Housing Committee met, Penny Pay has been attending the MCAG RED team, and the RED stands for Regional Economic Development Team. And they allow her to participate because we're part of the MCAG region, and I don't recall just exactly how many counties there are, but it's it's a pretty big region. Most of these, and I say most, but a lot of the counties are paying dues to this organization. And why this came up at Housing Committee is that MCAG also has a housing group that that works regionally. And the discussion was it might be of value for us to be a participant in MCAG. And they suggested that we bring their executive director, Sue Fortune, into a future committee, the whole meeting, to have that conversation. But before I extend that invitation, I want to make sure that you're interested, because if there's no interest here, there's no sense in wasting their time coming making a presentation to you. Their dues, I was way over what I thought when I mentioned it at the Housing Committee, I thought it was an excess of eight thousand. But contacting the director, she said for Ogumah County, the annual dues would be three thousand five hundred. I did receive an email from Penny today, and she says it's two thousand one hundred. I'm gonna go to the, what the executive director told me was thirty five hundred, and suggesting if that's something you're interested in, I would be happy to to call Sue and get her in here for a future committee, the whole. But if that's not an expense that you have any interest in at all, again, I don't wanna have her come in just just to have a talk.
You know what the benefits would be?
Well, there's quite a few things that they do. I know that the regions that I'm used to working with do an awful lot in land use planning type area. So they'll do a lot of mapping studies, you know, wetland studies, they do a lot of economic development work. They're a pass through organization for a lot of federal monies that way. But I'm not that familiar with MCAG to be able to tell you exactly what all they do. It's kind of like MAC, only just kind of a different focus, where MAC is working with Lansing and legislation. They're doing things like working with Mishda and working with EDC, MEVC, and groups like that. We just got some email in from MDOT and some grant work that they're doing. We don't obviously do the roads, but they they try to coordinate a lot of things like that. But it would, if you're interested, I mean, if you think this is something that might benefit us, it would be good to have Sue to really go through the array of services that they offer.
Commissioner Wiltsey, you're on the Housing Committee, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah. So we had a Housing Committee meeting this past Tuesday, and the biggest challenges that we're having right now is we're just trying to navigate through the process, starting this when when Mishda approved these plans that the, you know, for us, we're in the Northeast Housing Partnership, and you guys have heard me talk about this, and I'm on the steering committee for us. We were really hoping that this target, Alpina, who is the fiduciary for the Northeast Housing Partnership, would really be able to kind of consult with us to really help us give more directions for these grants. This really truly is a great opportunity right now to take advantage and really try to get this huge housing shortage issue that we have in Ogumah County. We all know we build houses, you know, those are all taxes that will come back to us. So we do have a great opportunity right now, but what we're struggling is is we had Target Alpina come and talk with us, and they gave us a big pitch basically about, in order to do this or that, it's gonna cost this and cost that, and obviously, we don't have the money to do that. So with Penny Pay's relationship with MCAG, she reached out to them to see what they could bring to the table for us. And those conversations just started, so I would like to table this, find out a little bit more of what we could get from MCAG and then be able to bring that back to you guys. Because ultimately, if we really, I mean, if you think about it, even if they would assist us with one grant program that would, you know, stimulate three to four hundred thousand dollars, which would build, you know, help build a dozen houses. I mean, just the tax alone base from one house over a certain amount of years would would pay for that, so.
How often are you guys meeting?
Well, it was once a month, but we're getting aggressive right now because of this timeframe and this opportunity, so we're meeting twice a month. We have another meeting next Tuesday at four o'clock.
So you'll come back to us with more information, your thoughts on this?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Good, yeah, no problem with that. Fiscal year twenty twenty five budget calendar.
Well, I apologize, I swear I had that on here, and I just checked for it, it's not there. But I can give you a synopsis of it, it's already been passed through the Budget Committee and our department heads. It's a standard calendar that we've used here for the last few years. And the first real step comes in June, when departments will put forward their requested fee changes for the coming year. And this will be an even more comprehensive list than in the past. You might recall, we did several changes mid-year for zoning fees and a few others, so it'll be a bit longer of a list. Then in in June, departments will be then directed to put their requests in on the BSNA system. In July, I'll go through there and formulate a recommendation to bring to you. And you would see a draft budget, your second tier of meetings in July, which will give us that meeting in August and September to really work through it. Also worked into the calendar is the monthly meetings of the Budget Committee, and I absolutely intend, it's been a very positive thing, and just to bring everything there, acting as a sounding board, had a very good discussion at our last meeting. And that's just preliminary stuff, as we get deeper into this. The group that you've appointed around the table, very knowledgeable about the inner workings of the county, and it's been, it's been great talking to a group of people who speak my language. It's and just to get some good ideas and good exchanges back and forth. So that's the principal change that you'll see in there, is that that committee meeting has been inserted. But otherwise, we have to have the budget adopted by the end of September, and we're that calendar will reflect that. If you're agreeable, I'll put the resolution together, but I guarantee I will attach that calendar, so you'll see it on Thursday.
When's your next Budget Committee meeting, Commissioner Simmons?
May third.
May third? I mean, I don't have a problem putting that on as long as we can see it.
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that, Commissioner Wiltsey?
Yes, that's yeah.
Commissioner Scott?
Yep.
A public comment, public comment in the room.
You're going to an H.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I did, I do, I do, transit slash wash pot, Commissioner Wiltsey, I apologize.
No, it's fine. This day we had a transit meeting, and our director brought to our attention that the wash pot that we did approve, there was some some mix up there, and it was hydraulic wash pot. And he was very adamant, it sounds like he spoke with Ray, you know, Ray's our main mechanic there, and that the hydraulic is not the way we want to go. So we want to be able to take that one back and go with one that the other option, right?
So the process would be, we bring a resolution next week that rescinds the earlier resolution, and then adopts that other proposal and to move forward, and they will hold their price, we've already confirmed that. We've not committed to anything yet, in anticipation of Ray coming back from vacation, it's a good thing we didn't. But it's just a simple process, but they definitely don't want the oil to go with the hydraulics to get into the septic system because they feel that will do some damage. And maybe if it was a municipal system, that might be a different story, but they definitely felt that hydraulic would be more of a detriment to their infrastructure.
Was it going with a different, I remember seeing that last week, is it going with the the different company, or just the?
Yeah, it's a different company, so I don't remember their name.
I don't neither.
Being something. But right, it's it's to accept the other quote instead of that first one.
Okay.
It was an oversight, and again, th- these are one hundred percent grant funded, being paid.
Okay, you guys okay with seeing that on?
Yes.
I agree. Okay, anything else on that? Commissioner Wiltsey, public comment, public comment in the room? Sir, you raised your head earlier, did you want to speak?
I did, but I think, well.
If you do, you gotta come up, you got three minutes, you gotta come on up, talk to us. State your name.
Danny Weiss is on the board tonight. One of your proposals per county, I'm thinking, you all need to be worried, there's gonna be a big huge number. This is establishing separate tax limitations for Ogumah County, the townships, and the intermediate school districts. Now, here's where it gets ugly, shall separate tax limitations be established for an indefinite period? Now, people, and I've heard a lot of people already come to me with this and go, hey, we ain't doing another cartland community college. There's nothing gonna be indefinite, so what I want to find out is, are they talking indefinite, or are they? Because I'll finish it, it says for an indefinite period or until altered by the voters of the county for the county of Bogomah and the townships and the intermediate school districts within the county, okay? So one is, a town is voted back off by the voters. Who is responsible for voting it back on the ballot, you guys, right, the commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's nothing in there guaranteeing you'll put it back on. I've heard this.
Mm-hmm.
When I seen that, it was just like, okay, Ogumah County, seven point two mils, townships, one mil, intermediate school district, three tenths of a mil. County's getting a seven point two, okay? Is there any way that you can, like, redo this thing and make it a little more user friendly for the people, or is that just how it's gonna be, it's gonna get turned up?
Tim, then hold on, Commissioner Scott. Tim, this is this is public comment, so typically, we don't respond, but I'm gonna leave this up to Tim. If he would like to respond, I would like him, since he's our administrator, to move forward with this.
Okay, so a a couple of things. Yes, it's indefinite, but when the voters originally approved that exact formula in nineteen sixty five, it was also for an indefinite period. But in nineteen seventy eight, when we passed the Headley Amendment, we started this thing called the rollbacks, and I wish I had my big chart here. We began rolling back from seven point two to seven point one nine nine nine, and all the way to where we are today at six point oh nine three three, I think it is. So the rollback continues to happen. If this were to pass with that wording, yes, it's indefinite, we started at seven point two again, but we start rolling back again as well. So very well could be sixty years from now, we're talking about this all over again, because everything would have been rolled back. What's happened is is that tax has been rolled back, inflation has continued to grow. And when we passed proposal A in nineteen ninety four, we capped our taxable value increases at five percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less.
Right.
Then we had the housing issue occur back in oh seven, oh eight. Not only did our our revenues start to go down at that point, but the housing values dropped. Well, nineteen ninety four, nobody ever thought anything like that would happen because it had never happened before. So we had our housing values drop, which means our taxable values are going down, and you see on the graph that our revenue actually dropped, did not increase, but dropped. Inflation, of course, kept going. After it dropped and everything leveled out, it literally leveled out for about ten years, very little growth at all, but inflation keeps growing. We, in the last two years, started to see an uptick in in the revenue coming in, but we're so far behind inflation that even resetting at seven point two doesn't catch us up. It does provide some relief to the county. Indefinite then, if it's passed now, indefinite from here forward means seven point two maybe the first year, but definitely by the second year, we start rolling back again, and the whole thing starts over.
But if you don't get the first time around, how are you gonna get it? Well, if you're gonna start rolling it back the following year, how? How are you, how are you gonna accomplish this? Because one thing you probably aren't aware of, what's gonna probably, and there's no guarantee yet, there are like a hundred and twenty three thousand, I'm watching this because I want to see what's gonna happen. Axmi.org is trying to put out a ballot in November to vote down paying property tax.
Yeah.
End of story, yes.
That is gonna really cave the state in, okay? I'm talking townships are done.
Townies are done.
Townies are done, yeah, all these boards are done, I mean, where's the money gonna come from? So at this point, I would say I'd start putting our heads together and say, how can we do this? Because that's even gonna affect the federal government, RBA, that's gonna affect us on the board that I'm on as chairman.
You're right.
So instead of worrying about just floating, I think we need to worry about, let's make this right the first time, get it right and be done with it.
What do you mean?
Well, saying that seven point two, that'll get us by, but then we're gonna start rolling it back. Well, if we're just barely getting by, what's rolling it back gonna do?
Rolling it back isn't a choice, that's the state tells us, we have.
Right, so there's some information, there's some information as well from our treasurer, I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, sir back there? No public comment in the room, any public comment? Hi, you wanna come up and introduce yourself? I'm gonna make you, come on up. Oh, that was very nice of you to take your hat off, that was very polite and appreciated.
All right, I'm doing the honor of the door challenge, and I'm here tonight to finish the local meeting.
And who you who you representing?
What's what's the plan that you're coming for?
All the honor of the door.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, thank you for being here, do you have any questions for us?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public, any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone, we have a closed session, closed session? Did you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, hi, I'm Doug Marsh, I'm the new reporter with Ogumah Herald, happy to be here.
Thank you, nice to meet you. We haven't had anybody reporting in a period of time, so it's it's nice.
Yeah.
We have a closed session, I believe that's why you're here, Matt.
Yeah, I'll make, this will require a motion.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session for a strategy session discussion with our county attorney, connected with negotiation of collective bargaining agreements, MCL. One five point two six eight one C.
With a motion with support, roll call vote to go into closed session. Roger. Thank you. Thank you. Jenny David? Yes. Craig Scott?
Yes.
Brendan Simmons?
Yes.
Charlie Wiltsey?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Did someone in front of town?
We didn't get a chance to talk about this, or that'll work, so next week.
Come on up.
I looked at that.
Vote to a juror. Support, all in favor, say yes.
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 Tracy, are you in the office, Mark?
Yeah, Brock told me I could leave early for working tonight, but I've got.